January 6, 2021, afternoon session of the Portland City Council. Please call the role.
Good afternoon, Mayor Wheeler. Rubio. Ryan.
Here.
Hardisty.
Here.
Maps.
Here.
Wheeler.
Here. Colleagues, I'd like to begin with a few brief comments about the situation unfolding in Washington DC and then certainly I'll invite any of you who would like to speak. What's happening today and Washington DC at the hands of Trump supporters, white supremacists, and other extremists in Washington DC is an assault on and an affront to our democracy. The situation in our nation's capital is incredibly dangerous, destructive, and despicable, and may have significant implications across our state, our nation, and indeed the world. The key to the success of our democracy has been the peaceful transition of power. The actions in Washington DC today were calculated to block the peaceful transition of power and thus the greater institution of democracy itself. Let's be clear, an attack on the US Capitol is an attack on American democracy. There's a fundamental compact international experience that makes it clear that elections matter. The voice of the voters must be respected whether we like the outcome or not. We must honor our democratic institutions' decisions without resorting to violence, intimidation, or destruction. We must honor the peaceful transition of power even when our side loses. That has ever been a core value of our United States. The culmination of four years of divisive hostile rhetoric is saddening and unfortunately not unexpected. Once again, Donald Trump is not only failing as a leader, he's giving tacit, if not explicit approval to those who would undermine our nation's core principles. And finally, though belatedly, we're seeing top Republicans in Washington DC and elsewhere call out the president for his lack of leadership. I stand in support of the confirmation of President-elect Joe Biden and Vice President-elect Kamala Harris. It's time to move forward. It's time to accept the will of the people. In Portland, with a new city council impaneled just today and a long history of working together as a community, we have an opportunity to show the nation and the world what it means to put aside our differences on behalf of the common good. That means listening, that means compromise, and it means we must all accept the need for change. There's a lot to be angry and concerned about in our nation, our state, and our city. Too many people feel like they're subjects, not citizens. Too many people are not well-served by our public institutions, and too many people continue to be harmed by those very same institutions. Today, I ask all of us to pledge to work together, to find solutions to address the legitimate concerns of our community. We must stand for and support the peaceful transition of power. And while I'm not anticipating any unrest in Portland, I've had questions and I want people to note, I've been in direct contact with our Chief of Police and others. We are both very disturbed by the situation in our nation's capital, and we're planning for contingencies and do what we can to protect everyone in our community. Thank you. Commissioner Hardisty, I'll start with you.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for that powerful statement. I, like you, I left this morning's council session optimistic. I was thrilled to see my new colleagues take their rightful seats as they were duly elected to do. I am appalled by what I'm seeing in DC and will call it what it is. It is a terrorist attack on our democracy. I am appalled that this was even allowed to take place. You may remember just a few short weeks ago in Salem, there was a similar attack on the state Capitol. And though I am not comparing causes, my tea kettle is going off. Sorry, I didn't know which would be worse, letting the tea kettle continue or not. My apologies. But as I was saying, it is clear to me that had this group of protesters been protesting black lives, or the environment, or gay rights, or whatever other issue people collectively joined forces to redress in their government, had they been anybody else, they would have not breached the Capitol, they would not have breached our state Capitol. And I look forward to the full investigation to find out how that was even possible, knowing that communities of color have lived under enormous fear from the day 45 took office and have been under these similar kind of attacks since that day. And so while some are surprised at what we're seeing in DC, I can't say I'm surprised. I'm surprised that you're surprised because we've allowed the hate, the rhetoric, the othering to create this huge divide. And it is my commitment that I will work with each and every one of my colleagues to make sure that we are creating safety in this community for everyone, regardless of what their first languages, regardless of their sexual orientation, regardless of whether they were the indigenous people to this land, or the ones that were forced here against their will. We have an obligation, and as I think the mayor said eloquently, we have an obligation to show the state, the nation, and the world that we are better than this. This is not who we are, and we will never accept this type of terrorist attack on our democracy. You on Meet, Mayor?
First time this year. Thank you for that. Thank you for that powerful statement. Yes, you made the right choice with regard to the teapot. If folks want to just raise their hand if they would like to make a statement, Commissioner Maps and then after that, Commissioner Rubio. Commissioner Maps, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate this opportunity to speak. Like all Americans, I'm shocked and saddened by the events we're witnessing in our nation's capital this afternoon. For those of you at home who are just tuning in, a mob has stormed our nation's capital today. The last time I checked, there was an armed standoff outside the House chambers. Shots have been fired. Members of Congress have fled the building and are currently sheltering in place at undisclosed locations. Friends, this is not what democracy looks like. That's why I'd like to take this moment to ask all Portlanders and all Americans to join me in making today the first week of a new year, the beginning of a new era in American politics and a new era in Portland politics. With this new year, let's embrace the politics of peace. Now, you might ask, why? Why embrace the politics of peace, Magnus? Well, here's why. Over the past years, we have seen our nation and our city transformed by violence. As we speak, our nation's capital is under curfew, blood has been shed, our elected leaders in Congress are in hiding, and there's a very similar story here in Portland. Our city that we all love has been transformed by violence. In the past year, homicides in Portland have doubled. In the past year, we have seen our police department use violence against Portlanders who are just expressing their right to free speech. In the past year, we've seen bands of vandals sweep through our neighborhoods, smash windows, and try to set buildings on fire, and it happened again last night in North Portland. Let's make sure that this does not happen again tonight. Now, let me be clear. To peaceful protesters, I thank you. Today is my first real day on Portland City Council, and I would not be here if it were not for the commitment of protesters to demand social justice. On the other hand, to people who commit acts of violence and vandalism, I say, please stop. Your violent acts are not helpful. In fact, they are hurtful. Your violence acts fuels more violence. Now, you know, violence is a disease which is more contagious than any virus that humans have ever known, and there's only one way to combat that disease, and that is to embrace the politics of peace. So Portland and America and my colleagues on City Council, please join me in rejecting violence. Let's choose peace. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Maps. Commissioner Rubio.
Thank you, Mayor, for giving us this opportunity to say a few words. As Commissioner Hardisty mentioned, I too am sad and outraged at what's taking place, but I'm sadly not surprised at all. This is what happens when this kind of insidiousness goes unchecked. And the insidious messages from this nation's outgoing president over the last four-plus years that quite literally have impacted all of the lives of many of us, from Black, Indigenous, Latinx, other communities of color, low-income, working families, LGBTQ immigrants and others have manifested itself today in this shameful insurrection that we're witnessing. And I'm finding myself in awe that this group of armed people aimed at destructing and inciting fear were able to enter into the halls of our most sacred democratic institutions without any fear and with complete boldness and confidence. And I keep thinking about the countless peaceful protests over the decades in the same nation's capital by immigrants, women, anti-war protesters, working people, and others that were met with much more force and resistance and sometimes even death. And in this moment, the work for justice is crystallized for me personally, and our work as elected figures is more critical than ever to do our part to ensure that systems work for communities and not against them. So I'm ready to work together with all of you and with the community, my colleagues, to do this work no matter how uncomfortable it is, because this is how real change happens. And let's not forget that in the midst of all of this, we have witnessed the beautiful emergence of the people's voice and vote in Georgia, led by Black women and people. And as a nation, let's look to this example of how when communities come together to determine their own futures, things change for the better for all of us.
Thank you, Commissioner Rubio. Commissioner Ryan.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, colleagues. It's heartening to be on a council with all four of you. All of your comments were so profound, and I think I just want to add that my first reaction was zero surprise for all the reasons that were stated. And there was the chilling comment during the first debate. How can we forget that? We're seeing it today. And I also was so excited when I woke up this morning. I shared Commissioner Hardisty's optimism. I was looking, like most of you, I'm sure, at the numbers in Georgia and almost pinching myself that this was happening. I think we're also at a place where we have to just recognize how fragile democracy is and how fragile fair elections are. And I always have this motto where I just have to take care of my side of the street. And with the four of you, I know that we're going to continue to do what's right here in the city of Portland, where we have justice focus and that we might not agree on every little detail, but man, we sure have similar values and we have similar goals. It's how we get there. And there should be tension and there should be passion. And I know, like all of you, you've been in a lot of protests in your life. I know I have. And they were passionate, and there were many hours. And yeah, I got arrested before. You know, they were always about love. They always came down to how we could live in a better society. And I thought President-elect Biden's words over the last hour were really profound, and we're so ready to have a healer in chief. And with that, I'll just conclude by saying thank you all for being so prepared. I had to go off the cuff. I just got numb over the last two hours, and I was excited about our own legislative agenda that we're going to talk about soon. Thank you, Mayor, for providing a space for us to be present with one another.
Thank you. Thank you all. Under Portland city code and state law, the city council is holding this meeting electronically. All members of the council are attending remotely by video and teleconference, and the city has made several avenues available for the public to listen to the audio broadcast of this meeting. The meeting is available to the public on the city's YouTube channel, pdxwwwportlandoregon.gov/video and Channel 30. The public can also provide written testimony to council by emailing the council clerk at cctestimony@portlandoregon.gov. The council is taking these steps as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and the need to limit in-person contact and to promote physical distancing. Pandemic is an emergency that threatens the health, safety, and welfare, which requires us to meet remotely by electronic communications. Thank you, as always, for your patience, your flexibility, and your understanding as we manage through this difficult situation to conduct the city's business. With that, we'll hear from legal counsel and the rules of order in the court. Good afternoon.
Thank you, Mayor. To participate in council meetings, you may sign up in advance with the council clerk's office for communications to briefly speak about any subject. You may also sign up for public testimony on resolutions or the first readings of ordinances. The published council agenda at portlandoregon.gov/auditor contains information about how and when you may sign up for testimony while the city council is holding electronic meetings. Your testimony should address the matter being considered at the time. When testifying, please state your name for the record. Your address is not necessary. Please disclose if you are a lobbyist. If you are representing an organization, please identify it. The presiding officer determines the length of testimony. Individuals generally have three minutes to testify unless otherwise stated. When your time is up, the presiding officer will ask you to conclude. Disruptive conduct such as shouting, refusing to conclude your testimony when your time is up, or interrupting others' testimony or council deliberations will not be allowed. If there are disruptions, a warning will be given that further disruption may result in the person being placed on hold or rejected for the remainder of the electronic meeting. Finally, please be aware that all council meetings are recorded.
Very good. Thanks, Robert. We have two items today, both cover our state and our federal legislative agenda. Kealan, can you please read items 17 and 18 together?
Accept the city of Portland 2021 federal legislative and regulatory agenda and 18, accept the city of Portland 2021 state legislative agenda.
Colleagues, this afternoon, we're bringing forth the 2021 state agenda and the 2021 federal and regulatory agenda for approval. Before I hand things off to the Office of Government Relations, as a reminder, we met in work session on Tuesday, November 10th with Director Edwards and put our team out to review the draft agendas as well as provide input. There have been ongoing discussions with both existing and new members of the council to further refine the agendas and to produce these final products that we're going to hear about today. You'll see a mix of ongoing priorities and new areas of focus, and I look forward to working with the government relations team on all of these. So with that, I'll turn it over to Elizabeth. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. I was excited to be here on your first day. I recognize the awkwardness of bringing the agendas on the first day, and hopefully you've been doing that outreach along the way. The start of the legislative session is upon us, and toward the end, I'll go through some of the next steps. But it's also been a very dramatic day, and I really appreciated the council's comments at the opening of this afternoon session. Washington DC was my home for about a decade, and I used to work in the Capitol Building. So it's been a very emotional day. But to the business at hand, as the mayor stated, we are bringing to you final versions of the 2021 state legislative agenda and the 2021 federal legislative and regulatory agenda. I'm joined by my team, Neil Stilstrom, our federal relations manager, Stacy Cowan, our state relations manager, and Eric Knoll, state lobbyist. And what we'll do this afternoon is walk through the work that my office has done to get us to this point and some of the changes that you'll see from the draft that was discussed at the November 10th work session to what we have now and how we came to some of those changes. So the long road to building the city's state and federal agendas began back in July, and we actually put out a call for issues to all the bureaus and council offices. And this year, the Office of Government Relations also worked much more closely with the Office of Equity and Human Rights in order to center racial and disability equity, which you will see in the preamble, which we have never had before, to both the state and federal agendas. The input that we received from our call for issues to the bureaus and offices was then followed up by outreach that we conducted in order to vet the various concepts for inclusion. And we talked with state legislators, congressional offices, council offices, subject matter experts, our city attorneys, community-based organizations, other important stakeholders and folks in government and the lobby. We then worked to distill this information into the draft documents that were discussed in work session for two hours on November 10th. And since that time, we've previewed the draft with the Biden transition team, again, going back to congressional offices and state legislators, going back to community stakeholders. And also, we made sure that the materials were publicly available on our website so that folks would be able to go and review. Between now and then, we had December legislative days in Salem or virtually in Salem and did more outreach with key partners and stakeholders, and of course, working with your offices inclusive of our commissioners-elect and now, congratulations, commissioners. And of course, our subject matter experts and bureaus to track down any inquiries and make sure that we have the correct information that's before you. So all of that then gets incorporated and distilled into these final documents. So I'll start first with the federal legislative and regulatory agenda and then go to the state. And I'm just going to highlight what are the substantive changes that have occurred between the versions, but not do the full overview unless the council would like to go a level deeper on anything. So starting on the federal side, I want to acknowledge the good work of Neil Stilstrom as well as Vicky Cramm, our DC representative. So we have someone on the ground back in DC helping to get us important timely information. The draft that you have before you is similar to what you saw in November. There are still seven priority areas: COVID-19 pandemic response, racial justice, climate and environmental justice, maintaining local authority and opposing preemption, infrastructure investment, community and economic development, and public safety and first response. So those remain the same. Under the COVID-19 pandemic response, this section was updated in order to support state eligibility for the Support Act, which provides behavioral and mental health program funding. So that's in addition to that section. The next area where we had substantive changes, and actually, this is where we had the most changes predominantly additions, was under the racial justice section. And so I'll tick through what the new items are there. We added support for the removal of the punishment clause in the 13th Amendment to fully abolish slavery. We updated and revised the bullet on administrative We updated and revised the bullet on administrative rules items regarding affirmatively furthering fair housing, Community Reinvestment Act disparate impact rule, equal access rule, and the proposed mixed status rule. And we, we updated that also for clarity. We added additional priorities around voting and accessibility for comments from Commissioner Hardesty at the work session. We added language on cannabis equity and passing legislation at the federal level that creates economic development opportunities and reinvestment in community health and education as well as federal and state expungement. And we added an update to expand the federal definition of who is experiencing homelessness to be more inclusive. So those are the additions and changes that are under the racial justice header. Yes?
I have a question, Elizabeth, if I may, Mayor.
Please, go for it.
Thank you. My question was, my brother's keepers were recently added. And I don't recall us talking about that program. Do you know why that was added?
Those were added. Neil, do you want to take this?
Yeah, I can, I can, I can take that. That was through conversation with the Office of Equity and Human Rights.
So maybe it's a different program, but my understanding is that program is a narrowly faith-based program. Is that so? What do you know about that program?
We know that that was a program that was important to OHR staff for a support. But I believe that the language that we have in here includes, it says, support national efforts to lift black communities such as Black Male Achievement and My Brother's Keeper. So it's inclusive of that, of those two programs, but it could be other programs as well.
So I would be much more comfortable if we changed it so that it didn't imply we're somehow endorsing this particular program. So because I am concerned that that program may not reflect the needs that we have in this community.
Mr. Trump, if that's something where the council is comfortable with that change, we can easily edit that out and update the report. We can make that edit in real time.
I'm hoping it's just seen as a friendly change.
Yeah, if, if there are no concerns, we're happy to make that right now.
Five. If people are looking for it, it's on page five, the agenda at the top.
The second bullet, yeah.
I've never heard good things about My Brother's Keeper, so I don't want to even imply that it was something that we would support.
I know it was something under the Obama administration had a relationship with. But like I said, if, if council doesn't have a concern about it, it is an easy thing to strike and we can make that edit to the report right now.
Just a process question. Do you need a motion or can we just?
No.
No, we just need consensus. I guess, does anybody object to just changing the language?
I, I'd like to know why it's in. I'm, I'm not clear on that point yet. So is there somebody from the Office of Equity and Human Rights who can explain its inclusion? Or Director Edwards, can you, I, I, I'm just not familiar enough with it to be able to, to sit here and make a yes, no decision based on the information I have.
Well, I, I can tell you by Googling it, the My Brother's Keeper is a welcoming Christian ministry with locations across the country that delivers furniture and food to families in need. Our mission is to bring the love and hope of Jesus Christ to those in need. So that tells me everything I need to know.
Well, I'll, I'll take love and hope no matter who's just.
As well, but many of these programs were developed, I mean, I think, I think the Black Male Achievement Program is a great example. They were developed with no infrastructure and I'm always concerned when we have 1.5 people running a program. So I don't want to add to that confusion.
Is, is there a way rather than us, you know, all trying, I, I, I understand this is part of the Obama administration agenda and that's part of the reason it's, it's in the federal agenda. This is probably a legacy issue. Is, is there some other way to address this issue now for the purposes of this report?
Yes, yes. I think actually because of the way that it's drafted, we can easily strike the language without doing harm to support for national efforts to lift black community. And we can just say support national efforts to lift black communities such as Black Male Achievement. And that leaves the door open. We can have further conversation, but that would be sort of full stop. And it would capture the program that is, is currently at OHR.
Commissioner Hardesty, I see you nodding yes. Can, can I take that as a motion?
Yes.
And I'll second. Any further discussion? Call the role on the amendment.
I don't know if that's procedurally necessary, although I would defer to Robert.
Well, it's, yeah, Robert, what do you think? It's a report.
I think it is best to proceed as an amendment.
Then let's go ahead and call the role. Uh, wait a minute. Commissioner Ryan has his hand up. Or is that just leftover?
That's leftover.
Okay, yeah, please call the role.
Rubio?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Hardesty?
Aye.
Map?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye. Back to the report is amended.
All right. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
So I may move us on now to the, there's one more substantive change between the draft that you saw in November and, and the version before you, which is under the infrastructure investment section. There, we've made changes in order to strengthen the affordable housing as infrastructure item. And otherwise, that covers the substantive changes to the federal.
Elizabeth, that, that seems like a distinction without a difference to explain why, why you made that change.
I'm going to let Neil hop in.
Absolutely. So it was a matter, it, it was a matter of wording to allow for additional funding for affordable housing as part of a housing as infrastructure policy. It was, it was more of a wording change than anything, but it really, it really is, as you said, Mayor, a very small change.
Great.
So I can pause here for a moment if there are any other comments on the federal agenda before we pivot into the state.
I'm not seeing anybody stand race, so why don't you go ahead and jump into the state?
All right, we'll keep truckin'. So turning to the 2021 state legislative agenda, I want to sincerely thank Stacy Cowan, our stake in relations manager, Eric Knoll, our state lobbyist, and Haley Tortorella, our associate, who actually provided support on both the state and federal teams. This report is also fairly similar to what you saw on the November 10th work session. On the state agenda, there are six priority outcomes. Eliminate racial disparities, improve police accountability, stabilize individuals and families, support businesses and nonprofits, advance environmental and climate justice to build an equitable future, and preserve and enhance local authority. So again, just hitting on the sort of non Scrivener's errors as prior edits. Going first to the eliminate racial disparities outcome, there were two changes. One, we replaced the term BIPOC under the bullet on the Oregon Cannabis Equity Act. And we replaced it with the more specific Black Indigenous and Latinx populations to better reflect the focus of that legislation. The other change that we made was adding a bullet to this section that is addressing hate symbols, including banning the display of a news. Moving to the support Portland businesses and nonprofits. The bullet regarding commercial tenant protections was updated in order to clarify support for both tenants and property owners in the commercial space. And then last but not least, under the preserve and enhance local authority outcome, there were two notable changes. One is we added language to the traffic safety bullet regarding non-s sworn officers reviewing citations initiated by a fixed photo radar camera in order to clarify our intent to seek policy change. And then the other one was adding climate action to the list of items where the city will actively advocate against restrictions on our local authority. And those are the, the substantive changes between the version you have before you in November and the version that is here today. Okay. So if I, if I may just indulge with a couple of next steps. Unless folks have any questions or comments on the state items.
I'm not seeing any.
Okay. So I rewrote part of this. We are in a very busy January. You know, the 117th Congress was sworn in this past Sunday, January 3rd. The balance of power in the Senate was decided by the Georgia runoffs yesterday and AP called the second race just an hour ago. So now we have a 50-50 split in the Senate, which I think changes our outlook on, on a lot of things, especially policy-wise. I'll note a couple of details. Under Georgia law, if the margin of the race is within 0.5 percentage points, which right now it looks like we're outside of that. But that, that could allow the request of a recount. So we'll continue to monitor where that, that final vote count falls. Of course, I can't speak to any legal challenges that may arise as well. The days we live in. And by Democrats picking up both of those Senate seats and the makeup of the Senate being that 50-50 split, we're actually getting into some pretty interesting days ahead because of course, the vice president serves as the tie-breaking vote. And the president and vice president-elect won't be sworn in until January 20th. And so until that point in time, Vice President Pence will serve as the tiebreaker. And so we're in this sort of awkward window of time as we transition. So just one other thing to consider. And of course, today was supposed to be the day the both chambers of Congress were supposed to certify the votes of the Electoral College. And that has been delayed by far-right protesters who charged the Capitol. We'll continue to monitor and report out when we know when the, the resumption of that work occurs. Folks may have also seen breaking news that there are protests happening in state houses around the country, including in Salem. So we'll also be monitoring and reporting on that. At the state level, we have organizational days starting next week, which is part of the rush to come before you today. So that will begin on January 11th and that will include the swearing-in of state legislators. We expect bills to also be available next week and anticipate roughly 3,500 measures to be introduced for the long 160-day session. And that's just for context, about 500 more than were introduced in the last long session in 2019. Session will officially start on Tuesday, January 19th and will largely be virtual. So we anticipate the virtual sessions to last until at least April, when physical access to the Capitol will likely be reassessed. But those protocols are going to continue to be reviewed and they may be reviewed a little bit before and again, a little bit after to see what is appropriate, what is safe and, and how and when may there be physical access actually made for the public and members of the lobby to get into the Capitol building. And then between organizational days and the start of session, we're going to have the city's annual legislative breakfast on January 15th. And so instead of, and it's where our council will meet with the Portland Legislative Delegation, have a open and formal conversation. And instead of being in the lovely Rose Room, we're going to be doing it on Zoom, as is the style these days. So that'll be a great opportunity for you all to talk about priorities and opportunities for collaboration and partnership with the members of our Portland delegation.
So on that note, Elizabeth, we don't meet at 7:30 AM this time, right?
It will not be.
Right?
That is one of the good things. You don't need to worry about commute times.
Yes, yes. So.
I think bathrobes are completely acceptable. So don't worry about it.
Yes, that, now you know how much I remember about those meetings, that they were early, right? They were inhumanely early.
I just, you know, I, I have not, never mind. I'm just going to stop.
Yeah.
I was going to make a bathrobe joke and then I said, yeah, forget about it. Elizabeth, could I ask you a couple of questions?
Yes, sir.
My number one, first of all, I want to thank you and I want to thank you for your leadership. And I'm, I'm keenly aware that this is an important symbolic moment for you as well as this is the last time you will be presenting an agenda before the Portland City Council. And I, I want to restate what I've said on many occasions, which is we've done an exceptional job. Not just for, for me or for the other members of the council, but for the city as a whole, city, small C city, everybody. Done a really good job advocating for us. And you know, compromise and camaraderie and a willingness to work with people from different perspectives is in short supply in this day and age. And it's always made me kind of smile to hear people from all walks of life down in Salem talk about how much they respect you and how they believe that you are honest and clear in your delivering information about the city of Portland on behalf of the city of Portland. And that, you know, people will miss you in that capacity in Salem as we will here inside our virtual city hall. But talk to us a little bit about the process going forward. So obviously, you know, we, we worked hard to come to this consensus agreement on what our council priorities should be. What, what's the typical, you know, other things will pop up, right? And we'll all make visits to Salem, all dig the grounds with the legislature. What, what are sort of the protocols that you would tell us as a council to engage in as we discuss items of interest, maybe to us individually or to a subset of the consensus agreement that we're, we're agreeing to here in, in this report? How could, how would you advise us?
Thank you, Mayor, for those comments. I, I really appreciate it. And, and to your question or sort of prompt, I, I appreciate you teeing up that issue. My office will be circulating around council offices for the review, what we call our coordination of Office of Government Relations memo, which talks about city policy administrative rule 3.01. Where in our office is the central coordinating point to make sure that we are speaking with one voice to other governments. And so as you noted, inevitably, even though our agendas are quite lengthy, although we tried to consolidate this year and we will continue to try and prioritize in the future and bring rigor to that, there will inevitably issues be issues that come up that we have not considered or contemplated in the agendas. And so at that point, if it is a gnarly sticky political issue, your Office of Government Relations will go to, we will likely start with whichever office is the commissioner in charge based on bureau assignment and then go to the other council offices, either based on their policy expert or their chief of staff, maybe go to the execs table and start to work and vet through if this is something where the city can come to a consensus and take a position. If it is something where we have a, a schism on council, we may go neutral. There may also be space where we do not take a formal position, but we do have more technical items that we advocate for to make sure that it is not, if an item were to be passed, it is not horrendous for us to implement. So there, there are some kind of middle paths in that. But as I said, we typically try to begin with the office that has the, the policy center based on bureau assignments and then go around to other offices. Now, I think. Now, um I think with a new council, uh, we will need to learn what your um preferences are and positions are and where your lines in the sand are as uh duly elected officials. And so that will be some of the relationship building between folks on my office um and and you all. So it expect to be bothered uh quite a bit, I would say.
If I may, Mayor, I also just wanted to add my real appreciation for Elizabeth Edwards and um her incredible team. I I it there's almost nothing that's happening at the state or national level that you guys have not done some analysis around and really understand what the best approach is that the city should take. So I'm definitely gonna miss you, Elizabeth, I I I I miss having those uh those fun fall uh uh look back sessions uh with you. And what I was gonna say to my new colleagues is um, as a former legislature legislator, I can tell you that the legislative process moves extremely quickly uh until it doesn't um and which means that uh many times government relations, there will be an issue that will come up that they will want you to weigh in on and they're gonna need a really quick turnaround. So I don't feel like they're being a pest uh when they do that because they do it rarely. But when they do it, they really do need a very quick response so that they can represent us well in whatever uh bodies they are operating in, so. And and yay, no more 7:30 AM meetings, at least during the pandemic, so. There is some good that comes out of pandemic life.
Thank you, Commissioner. I I often draw the analogy of um our work as uh being like traveling to other planets. And the length of a day on Mars is different than the length of the day on Earth. And so sometimes the turnaround time is going to be a lot faster, uh so thank you for that.
I guess I forgot to mention, all of you have relationships that may be helpful to us getting legislation passed. So don't hesitate to talk about who you're friends with, who actually serve in the legislative body so that helps our team be able to know whose name to lead with when they start conversations sometimes. So all that will be useful.
Great, does that complete the presentation?
Yeah, if I'm if I may just take a moment to say thank you. You know, I I want to thank my team for all their work to put together these agendas and to Dr. Smith and her office for helping us deepen our our commitment to centering racial justice and to the bureaus for their immense expertise on this whole variety of subject matter. And to our council, um old and new, for their leadership. It has just been such a fantastic honor to get to represent my hometown. So um, thank you, and there's definitely, despite the uh nonsense of today, there's a bright future ahead. I feel that.
Thank you, appreciate it. All right, so unless there's any further discussion, we'll go to the motion and the vote for item 17, 18, a motion.
So move.
Second.
A motion from Commissioner Hardesty, second from Commissioner Ryan, any further discussion on the report, the Federal Legislative Agenda and Action Items? Seeing none, please call the roll, Kealan.
Rubio.
Um, first, I just want to say thank you, Director Edwards, for not just helping to create this legislative agenda for 2021 before you left, um but also for the work that you've accomplished during your whole tenure here uh with the city. And I'm so sorry that I didn't get a chance to work with you for very long at all. But I have no doubt that our paths will cross in civic life again. And your leadership and insight and collaborative nature will be really dearly missed. You have a lot of people that really love you in this city. I also want to thank um Mills and Stacy for representing us at the state and the federal level and the rest of the excellent government relations team that helped solidify these proposed legislative priorities. And this upcoming legislative station session will be critical in achieving our path of economic recovery from the pandemic. And as we advocate for these additional resources, we must ensure that support first includes those who need it most. Um, I'm really thrilled about the agenda on both counts, the federal and and the state that will be pursuing uh something that really reflects our values around racial justice, housing, comprehensive immigration reform and supporting working families. Um, at the state level in particular, around um accountability and then the innovative, thank you for including the the innovative ideas around universal representation in the Oregon Worker Relief Fund. These types of programs are the ones that our community really depends on. So and I say this with a lot of respect to previous councils, but these this agenda looks very different and very representative of all Portlanders than the ones that I've seen since the last time I was here over 11 years ago. And that is something to really be proud of. And I'm very proud to be connected to this work and to your work and to be advancing these items together with the government relations team this year and with my colleagues. So thank you again, and I vote a I.
Ryan.
Thank you. Just a call to order, this is looking at both of these reports, right?
No, this is just the vote on the the federal.
Oh, it is.
Yeah.
Um, I just wanted to start off by also acknowledging Director Edwards. The last few months of I've had a few moments with you and you're just such a pro at what you do. And I was really, really disappointed when I read, when we received your your email and um. But I've also noticed every time I talk to someone on your team, I noticed you are calling them your team till the very end. They uh they're a good team, and so I'm not surprised that you've attracted such people to work with you. So I I'm I'm good, I'm good with knowing that we have a great bench um that that works with you. I think in general, I I'm excited about the agenda. I would agree with what Commissioner Rubio said, it's the language is more inclusive than ever, um based on just what I've followed. I think the one thing that I want to remind myself of, and Commissioner Hardesty spoke to this, is that things, well, things move fast until they don't. I appreciate that, it's like a hurry up and wait dance, right? But um, I think knowing how we will get um updates in real time, knowing how we will notice when, a- as we know with this process, certain things suddenly are legit and then others might not happen for another session. And so getting that reality of real timing, so where we know where our opportunities are. And so there's, this is a living document, is what I'm saying. I mean, we're we're saying yes to report, but I I guess I I always see these reports as a draft because then we're going to get into reality as we step into reflective sessions. In general, I just want to make one comment that I think we could improve upon, and and that would be, you know, the houselessness emergency is so concrete. And my brain and both of them had to work a little too hard sometimes to find um how that was spelled out. And I think it, I can't imagine how difficult it was for your staff to uh take all of these and put them into the subcategories. But I do think that the houselessness emergency is so gripping and eerie and profound right now that I would hope that we get a little more concrete and succinct on where we land those in both um, the action in both reports. Um, I'm not saying it's not there, but just I had to dig a little bit to to connect the dots. And so I just want to give that feedback, I probably should have done that before I voted I, but uh before we were in this part. I just want to, the the this, the the break in between the morning and the afternoon, as we all have acknowledged, kind of threw us off a bit. But I just want to say um, I'm very impressed and I vote I.
Hardesty.
Excellent work as always, um and as always, feel free to reach out if there's a member or two of our congressional delegation that needs a little push, uh pull in the right direction, happy to vote I.
Maps.
First, I'd like to thank Director Edwards for her service to our city. These are great work products, we're excited to head into the legislative session in the coming congressional sessions. Uh wonderful work, I'd like to offer myself to reach out to our elected officials at the state and local or the state and federal level to help. The same with our bureaus uh too, and it is my pleasure to vote I.
Wheeler.
Good work as always, Elizabeth, great work to your team as well. Thank you, all of you for doing uh really fantastic job working with all the commissioners' office, both former and our new commissioners as well. I'll miss you, Elizabeth, but I know you're not actually going anywhere, uh just in a new capacity somewhere. And we'll look forward to seeing where you land. Godspeed, I'm very happy to support this report, I vote I, the report is accepted as amended. And now to the state legislative agenda, item number 18, please. Kealan, you can go ahead and call the roll.
Oh, I'm sorry, so the motion and the second is good for both?
Oh, I'm sorry, no, uh, you're right, I need a motion, Commissioner Hardesty is moving, can I get a second?
Okay.
And we have a second from Ryan, please call the roll.
Rubio.
Hi.
Ryan.
Yeah, just a couple of quick comments, um, I will be voting I. I just wanted to uh call out that how important it is that we continue to work in close uh contact with our other local municipalities, specifically the county and metro. And I saw that in here, but I I wanted to make that statement right now. Because a lot of the issues in the state uh legislative agenda have a lot of intersection. And I especially uh want to call out mental health system work and investment. It connects with houselessness directly, it connects with community safety safety directly. And again, it's one of those examples where you have to look in multiple categories to knit it together. And that's not a criticism this time, it's just that these are such big priorities that they're they're woven in. And um and then with houselessness, I have some of those same concerns I had on the federal. And all of that said, um, I'm looking forward to being a a great team player with your office, I vote I.
Hardesty.
Again, thank you all for your great work and the work that you will do as the legislative process kicks off. I want to also say that um it is important to us that we uh get uh many of these items actually through to the finish line this year. Police accountability remains a huge issue uh that we must make sure we have the ability to do the work that we need to do. And I support Commissioner Ryan when he talks about our houseless community mem- uh members and really trying to be strategically focused on how do we actually move the needle knowing just how radically uh evictions will happen as soon as the moratorium has been lifted. I gotta tell you, if there's one thing that keeps me up at night, that is it. So uh I'm happy to vote I, I'm happy to work with my colleagues to figure out how we could be most helpful to our team at the state and federal level, I vote I.
Maps.
I vote I.
Wheeler.
Hi, the report is accepted. Again, thanks to everybody that completes our work for this afternoon, we are adjourned, thank you.